Appointed allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
The dear heavenly Father be with us this evening as we do the business for the city and the community of God and the welfare. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
It's I C approval agenda. So this is the approved agenda for September nine, twenty twenty four, regular planning permission meeting.
I'm going to go to approve the agenda for September nine, twenty twenty four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. I have D citizens comments. I don't think there's anybody here for citizens comments, so.
We're nobody.
Yeah, nobody important is here for citizens comments, so. Mr. Chair, you can both open and close the meeting if you have further citizens comments.
All right, we'll open and close citizens comments.
Very good. I have E per laments. This is approved events from August twelfth, twenty twenty four, regular planning permission meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. For his own appeals, there is none. I'm G full business. There is none, so we're going to move straight. I have H new businesses, H one, City of Goddard Water Infrastructure. So as the city grows, quick background, discussions around city infrastructure maintenance is at the forefront of discussion. So the city has professionals, the public works part of managing this essential infrastructure, and they have a regular pulse of needs and expected growth demands. The city has asked Brooke Brandenburg, who is the public works director, to speak on the subject and planning commission get into an open dialogue with them at any point. So at this point, I want to invite Brooke Brandenburg up to the stage. Go ahead and introduce yourself and what you do and all your good stuff.
David Gilman, I'm Brooke, I'm public works director for City of Goddard. I'm going to talk a little bit about water today. We're going to talk about our source, our storage, um, demand. Anything that you, any questions you have, feel free to ask them. I think that dialogue is going to be the important part of this because you're going to have questions that I may not answer in my brief little opening statements here. So I want to start out and talk a little bit about our wells. Um, we've got four wells that on the very west side of Wichita two are right on one nineteenth street, and two are stuck back in the subdivision there. They're numbered wells four and five and seven and eight. Um, each of those wells has a maximum pumping capacity of five hundred gallons per minute if being run individually. They have a pumping capacity of four hundred gallons per minute if they pump consecutively. That is based on our permit from K D H E. They tell us how much we can pump per well, whether it's individually or consecutively. And they always drop it down a little bit if you're running with one well at a time. Total amount of water we can pump per hour licensed from K D H M Kansas Department of Ag is three hundred and twenty million gallons a year. A little bit back to the wells here, um, location. You probably see the two that are on the, um, west side of Millham when they're on the side of one nineteenth, the two blue and gray buildings. This is basically Goddard, I think City of Goddard well, water well set on the side. Those were perfected, um, by Department of Agriculture about five years ago. And at that point, we were limited to forty nine point eight million gallons of water annually per well. Uh, we recently had that application reapproved and reopened, so now we can pump those more than that. When we were running at four hundred, or four hundred, not forty nine point eight million gallons of water per well, per year on those two, we could run those wells approximately four to five months, and they were tapped. And that put us in a bad situation if we had another well down. We had to, had to run on one well. We had to run over on those two. As I said, that application was submitted July twenty twenty two. It was approved this year, so we're happy that we can, we can run all four of our wells as much as we would like up to three hundred and twenty million gallons a year. Well, seven and eight are in utility easements on the west side of, in the West Wichita subdivision. They're kind of hidden back there. Those are submersible pumps. If you looked out there, a lot of them, you look like a big field with maybe a pipe coming out. One has a small building. Those average pumping capacity for those two wells is seven hundred and eighty gallons per minute. I know our, our permit says we can run up to four hundred per well, which would be eight hundred, but we're not quite getting that production out of well seven. It has dropped down a little bit. We had some issues with that water well a couple of years ago. We had to have it relined. And when they relined it, they damaged the liner. So we had our new company come in and reline the well again, which created a smaller opening, which reduced our pumping capacity in that well. And that's, that's too bad because when I came on board about five years ago, we, we could pull six hundred and forty, six hundred and fifty gallons a minute out of that well, and we're down to about three hundred and fifty gallons a minute now. Um, the water is pumped from those well four wells in their sixteen inch transmission line that runs from one thirty fifth basically to our tower complex. Um, on the way there, it stops, it runs through the disinfection, the chlorine building on one thirty fifth street. That's one thirty fifth. And then water is disinfected. It's simply disinfected by introducing sodium chloride into it. It is basically, um, just bleach, very strong bleach. We use a pump, but we meter it depending on how much water is flowing through, how much water is starting through that, how much chlorine we, we introduce into the water. When you introduce water into the chlorine, basically you're disinfecting it. You're killing any bacteria, viruses in it, or chlorine into the water, I'm sorry. And as you do that, you want to put enough chlorine in that after it kills and disinfects the water, it holds the chlorine residual through the system. And what that is, is a very small amount of chlorine that stays in the water as it is stored in the tower and the tank, and as it goes out into distribution system and into your homes. Uh, you don't want to get below point two millions of a part, two millions of a, I'm going to be getting like numbers right here. Two parts per million, point two parts per million of chlorine in your residual. Do you want to get lower than that? We want, run ours about one point zero to one point two parts per million to give us a little bit of wiggle room in case we were to have a break or something. We don't run a zero residual. A zero residual on your water or pressure loss requires a boil order, which we do not want to do. From there, the water goes down sixteen inch transmission line and into our storage facility. It contains two containers to store, one five hundred thousand gallon above ground storage tank and then one five hundred thousand gallon tower. The water is pumped directly into the storage tank. And then from there, it is pumped using a booster station into the water tower. And the way that works is we've got a system called skated system that allows all these, all these different facilities to talk to each other. If the tower gets below a certain percentage, the pumps come on the booster station, they pull water from the tank, fill the tower up. When the tank gets below a certain percentage, it turns on the wells and the chlorine, and they fill the tank. So it kind of works in a loop like that. Everything talks to each other. It allows us to keep an adequate amount of water. If your tank hits, or your tower gets too low again, you'll depressurize your system and you'll end up with a boil. Luckily, we haven't had that, and we don't want that. We've done not at all. It takes, when, with all wells are running, it takes about three hundred and eight minutes to fill the five hundred thousand gallon above ground storage tank. So that gives you kind of an idea how long it takes us to produce half a million gallons of water. K D H E best practices suggest that S A D should have a full day's water, use full days of water and storage. So if you use a million gallons a day, you should have a million gallons of storage. We'll talk about demand here a little bit. As I said, the storage, uh, the storage, we have a booster pump station. It has a pump capacity of nineteen hundred gallons per minute with two pumps and twenty nine hundred gallons per minute with three pumps. Uh, with two pumps running, it only takes two hundred and fifty six minutes to fill the tank or the tower from the tank. So it, um, with three pumps running, it only takes a hundred and seventy five minutes. So in conclusion, it takes longer to fill the tank from the wells than it does to fill the tower. And that's something we want to watch because if we start draining that tower too quick, we, we can fill it quicker than we can fill the tank, and that could get us into a bind. So a little bit on usage here, and this is based on twenty twenty three actual because we have a full year there. Um, in twenty twenty three, we pumped two hundred and seventy million, seven hundred and sixty thousand gallons of water. That is eighty four point six one percent of the maximum allotment that Ag allows us of three hundred and twenty million gallons. Right now, looking at our trends, we're looking to run about two to three and a half percent higher this year than last year. My projection right now is just under two hundred and seventy seven million gallons for twenty twenty four. We're pretty much on track for that based on what we're seeing. In twenty twenty three, there were twenty one hundred and one residential meters, and they use about eighty eight million gallons of water a year there, or about two hundred and forty two gallons per day per household. That counts for eighty point eight four percent of our current water usage. Um, so we estimate approximately a thousand additional residential meters in use by twenty thirty. Based on that two hundred and forty two gallon per minute household number, that equals about eighty three to eighty five million additional gallons a year we will need to produce to feed those homes. The school district, U S D two six five, in twenty three, they use, um, just under thirteen million gallons of water, which is just under six percent of our total usage. And they commercially use a little over thirty million gallons, which is about thirteen and a half percent of our total annual usage. As I said before, we're allowed to pump three hundred and twenty million gallons annually. The amount of pump per well obviously is based on our permit, what it will produce. We can run up to five hundred, as I said before, if a single well is running, four hundred if multiple wells are running, if the wells will produce that. Some will, some won't. So moving forward, um, let's talk a little bit, we can hear the water safety real quick. We do, um, K D H E E P A testing regularly. Every two weeks, we send a water sample to a third party lab, and they test it for, you name it, they test it for it. Make sure it's safe. It doesn't have any, any bacteria or any viruses in it. Multiple times a year, we send it in for special tests, whether it be E. coli test or lead copper test. We do that about every third year. Our water, while it is hard, and people say it's bad, it's safe. We do have safe water. It is very, it is high mineral content, so it's very hard, and some people consider that bad water, but our water isn't bad. It's just hard, but it's very safe. I was at a lake last weekend, and I will take our supposed bad water, whether sulfur water or anything. But if ours doesn't stink, we can get out of the shower. Anyway, I just had to say that because when, when I hear someone say, you got bad water, God, it kind of kicks me. Because it's, yes, it is hard, but it's not bad. It's very safe and it is clean. Moving forward in the future, and we got a few challenges. We have some future needs. Um, you may be aware, and this year, um, the city signed an agreement with Borough Water District Four to pump additional, to purchase an additional thirty five million gallons a year from them, from their wells, and that will be purchased on off peak time. Um, I said before, our new application for Wells Form Five was, was approved by Ag this year, and that allows us to run those wells harder. We have looked around for some potential new water rights and wells. That's not really come to fruition at this point, and may in the future. Um, something else that will probably go a long ways is additional storage. And I wanted to address this additional storage. I want to go back to what I said earlier about K D H E recommending we keep a full day's use of water in storage. We can do that most of the year. But June, July, August, and September generally, we'll run, we will run about a million two to a million four gallons a day, which puts us a little bit over, you know, we'll run our storage dry and fill it up with twenty, run twenty five percent out of it again on these days. So from my perspective, storage is huge moving forward. If we can store another five hundred thousand, we can store another million, and we can pump it in during off peak. We can go a lot longer for higher demand during the, during the high demand parts of the day. The, during those, those busy months, the highest demand part of that day is between six A M and about nine thirty A M. And we're seeing anywhere from two hundred to three hundred thousand gallons of water flowing those mornings. And most of it's going on grass and down the storm during the gutter, which I don't mind putting on grass, but when I see forty percent of it flowing down into the gutter, it's kind of a tough pill to swallow with a string of water. But that's really where our, our, our demand is hitting us in those times of the morning and during those months of the year. Otherwise, we'll run non-peak, non-summer, non-grass water in time weakened. We can get around five hundred, six hundred thousand gallons a day pretty easily. It's just those peak months that really hit us. Um, I know there was some discussion, um, among staff, maybe a little bit amongst the council, I don't know, about some water conservation in the future. Um, I would, I would be a proponent for that, especially with, with watering lawns. We're probably going to turn the splash pad down a little bit next year. We're going to open it later in the, later in the spring. We're going to close it after Labor Day. We're probably not going to have it run until ten A M in the mornings. That way we miss that peak demand time. And then we're going to close a little bit earlier than even. Uh, one of the reasons I'm pointing at that splash pad is we'll use about twelve to fifteen million gallons a year down the drain by splash pad. And that's big. During that peak time of the morning, if we can just shut that off, it'll make a big difference. And maybe in the future, going to, you know, certain days watering lawns, if you're using city water, may help as well. But that's, that's policy stuff. That stuff staff can bring to council, and we can discuss that later. What lessons do you have?
Your booster station, where is it at?
Booster station is over the tower complex, and it sits directly between the, we've got the above ground tanks, storage tank. We've got the water tower, and there's a small building that sits right between them.
That's pushing it up to the top of the wall?
Yes, it is.
You don't have a booster, a booster pump between your wells and?
We do not need one between our wells. We can, when we have all of our wells running and we're pushing water down that pipe, we're running about ninety two to ninety five psi pressure. We can push it pretty hard into the tank.
Are there some merciful?
Um, no, we have two above ground pumps and two submersibles.
Are they on V F Ds, the above ground pumps?
Well, our aboves are on V F Ds, our submersible we're not right now, but we're looking. When we get our new skated system, we'll probably put V F Ts on those as well. Our, our booster station though, if we have to take the water tower out of service or maintenance painting, anything, we can run and charge our system on those pumps from our five hundred thousand gallon tank. We can keep that pressure system pressurized and people in water. Using, using bypassing a tower if we need to.
You test it for free chlorine, total chlorine?
We test, we test for chlorine residual, um, which is, we'll do that every single day of the day, every single day of the week, even on holidays. So we, we're pretty solid, we're pretty steady, steady on that. We don't have any issues with that. Like I said, we run at about one, one oh, one point four at the highest. We don't want to smell chlorine, but we want to make sure we get out to the very edge of our system that is still working.
Is that the total chlorine?
Total, yes.
Just the Eisenhower School Complex, are they on Goddard City Water or are they on Wichita?
They're on Wichita Water.
Okay. So that, so the U S D demands are that, for the Goddard.
Correct. Everything except the Eisenhower Complex.
You do any dip slides for bacteria testing?
We do all that, all our bacteria testing, twice a month, we send it in a variety of maps, and they do all that.
So right now, you're saying we use around two hundred and seventy million, I think it was, with the expected eighty in by twenty thirty for, for fifty?
Correct. What we're looking at, yes, and we're using two, we use two hundred and seventy in twenty twenty three. Just like I say, real quick math, based on, um, household average use per day. And approximately a thousand meters, we're looking at about eighty million by twenty thirty, if that, if those homegirl building and, you know, homeowners install that.
So that would get us to three fifty, but we can only use three twenty at this point, but we've got the agreement for thirty five. So theoretically, we're covered.
Correct.
But just barely covered and.
Correct.
So what's the, what's the, you, you mentioned you, um, you would like, you, you look for water rights, and if not, then you're full of the.
The whole reason for water rights is a couple of things. One, they don't have to sell them to us, and they don't want to. The second major hurdle is they're far enough away. That pipeline to get it here would be five to ten million dollars. And the third hurdle is that doesn't count, um, drilling and developing wells either. Third hurdle is just because we buy the rights doesn't mean that Ag will let us pump it anymore. So I mean, I would be all for buying additional water rights if they were close enough, we can make them work. But that's a, that's a pretty heavy ticket to get the water here. And we haven't found anything closer that I'm aware of, have you?
Now, I think at this point, what we're learning is that perhaps, we're not completely solid on this, um, hypothesis quite yet, but that probably the cost benefit analysis would prove more value to connect to our neighboring system, have more of a regional supply of water versus trying to go out and find more of our own. The water rights that are available are so far away that the cost of bringing to us, it just wouldn't be worth it. So a lot of the cities around here buy from neighboring communities. Some of them only buy off peak, so they produce their own primarily, but then they buy, um, you know, the rest of what they need. So, but the rural water districts, you know, thirty five million gallon is an ultra conservative starting point. Uh, we wanted to make sure that their system could handle us bringing in their water. So I anticipate having Brooke as too, as does our city engineer, who also is an engineer for rural water district, which is helpful because he has very knowledge of those systems. But we anticipate that that number will continue to grow from thirty five, hopefully much, much more as we see what their system is capable of. And if we have to, we'll partner with them to improve their system so we can take more water. They're only pumping like twenty percent of their annual allotment, so there's a lot more water we could buy from them as long as the distribution system is, is beefed up, so to speak, so we can take that amount. Um, there's a lot of things that we are doing behind the scenes to address this. And one of the reasons we wanted to have this conversation with planning commission is to impart with you, in no uncertain terms are we running out of water from a physical sense. The aquifer, I think, is ninety two or ninety three percent full, um, and it's not, and that, we don't have an issue there of running out of water. It's an imaginary regulatory line that is our hurdle, which we've proven we can leap that hurdle, so to speak. Uh, just getting the perfection period reopened on two of those wells. The mayor and vice mayor and I went up to Topeka, and we hand delivered our application and walked around to try to push it through because it had been nine months since we submitted that. So, um, you know, if you put enough effort into it, we can, we can move those imaginary lines, so to speak, of bureaucracy that are limiting us. The, the issue probably is more so, um, you know, our, do our wells need, we have a well or two that may need to be redrilled so they're pumping at their full capacity. But we can physically get more water from that aquifer. The three hundred and twenty million gallons is literally an imaginary line of bureaucracy that we're working through, and I'm confident we'll, we'll be able to take care of that.
Yeah, yeah, to add on, add on what Craig said, he just took the words right out of my mouth with the fact that there's more water there. We need to be able to pump it. And so between rural water four, originally when I put the agreement together, I asked for a hundred and ten million gallons. It kind of sticker shocked him, but I wanted as much as I could get. And we'll still go after more, I think, as, as time goes by. But with Aquifer is, is looking pretty good. The wells are old. We have a couple of wells that were put in in the late sixties, and basically just been run, where you don't have to run them, but three or four hours a day. Maintenance is low and things don't break as much when you've got, you know, you've got a problem with a well or two, and you've got two that are running nineteen hours a day, and it shows your mechanical deficiencies. And we, we found some of those, we've found some of those. But with that aquifer being healthy and the potential, maybe redrilling a couple of those wells. I, I would say there's a chance we could go back to Ag and try to get that three twenty pumped up to maybe four hundred.
They won't have a choice.
They won't.
And unfortunately, as you guys have probably learned, government is unfortunately reactive. They want to see you pushing that line before they start pushing that paper to raise that line. Uh, proactivity unfortunately is, is, is not a thing that we see very often, especially when you're working with higher units of government. So that's why we have to do a bunch of stuff here locally to, to make sure that we're well taken care of. Couple of other things that, that we're working on, um, through the whole water rate conversation. We had some really great citizens feedback. We've got an ad hoc water committee now that, that Brooke has been participating with, along with a couple of our other, uh, city staff people. But one of our citizens had suggested to us that we can, we go out and talk to some residential well digging companies and see if they would do a, a special price for City of Goddard citizens since the water rates are going up. And, uh, through some inquiries, we were able to find a company that would do it, uh, dig wells for thirty seven hundred bucks. Mike had told me when he tried to get a quote on a well a few years ago, it was close to ten grand. So we're proud that we're able to package something like that together for the citizens. Now they want to do eight at a time. That way, you know, economy's a scale. They could come and knock out a couple, eight wells at a time over a day or two. Uh, but our hope is, is that some of our, I'll call them water wasters that are pumping ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand gallons to water their lawns, they might consider making the investment at the well, in a well at a reduced price. That right there is one little way, one little piece of the puzzle where we might be able to reduce our annual volume pumped. If all your high end users are going to go, you know, let's just say we get twenty or thirty of them to do it, you know, over a couple of years, it makes a difference. But one of you guys, one of our neighbors showed me, or talked, told me that eighty thousand gallons, uh, from his watering during peak season is a huge lawn, and this guy is on city water using that much, which is insanity. I mean, I use like twenty five hundred gallons a month. So if you're, if you are above ten gallons, ten thousand gallons, your bill is going up significantly. And some of the intended consequence with that is that we want people to be more responsible with their water use because it's a valuable resource. Your, your zoning administrator is reading a book right now called Thirteen Ways to Carry a Community, and the first chapter is on water. Talks about how only one percent of the water in the world is drinkable. And I mean, it has all of these really cool statistics that just talk about the value of it and how we take it for granted. And, uh, our council and our ad hoc water committee has, has been reading that. And I would encourage you guys to take a look at it too. It kind of gives you another view of, of this issue. It's not just a City of Goddard issue. It's a, it's an international issue, so to speak.
Yeah, we're, as I said before, we're, we're seeing about two hundred and fifty to three hundred million gallons. Uh, no, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand gallons, I'm sorry, pumped every morning between six A M and nine thirty A M. And I'm going to bet you two hundred million, or two hundred thousand, that's what I'm lost. And that's, that number there is what takes us from a million dollar, million gallons per day peak use, the two of them is that water. And it's, like I said before, it's, it's kind of hard to watch that water go down the drain way down port.
What about four years down the road when a lot of these additions get built, people start building their, what type of building, any ideas?
I'm sitting against her.
Any ideas four years from now what the water usage is going to be every day?
Well.
With all the additions and the new homes?
We should be, we should be, we should, at three years, we should be close to probably three hundred, I'd say about three hundred thousand. And by twenty thirty, we should be running about three hundred and fifty thousand, or million, three hundred and fifty million, three hundred million, three hundred million, I'm sorry.
So you can see why that thirty five million gallons that we've acquired from rural water districts is important. It's a priority number one for us right now is our city engineer designing another booster station, which will do a thousand gallons per minute so we can actually take that water from them. And then we're going to work with them on growing that thirty five million gallon a year. Uh, you know, we've got a lock-in price of three dollars per thousand gallons, which is about a buck cheaper than all the other cities pay our other neighboring community for water. So for ten years, you know, we're going to have a good price, and we need to get that booster station hooked up and then see what our system could take. And if it can take more, we can up that thirty five million gallons we anticipate it will. And then if it can't, or if we see some ways we can open that up even further, we'll actually partner with them on investing in their system so we can take more of their water. we'll actually partner with them on investing in their system so we can take more of their water. Uh, there's kind of a win-win scenario there.
Yeah, it's, it's a big plus for rural water four because it's a lot of revenue for them. And as Craig said, well, they're pumping about twenty percent of their annual allotted capacity, which means they're gonna get their wells perfected and help lose all that capacity. But everything they sell us works in their favor. So like I said before, I want a hundred million from them, they, they sticker shocked it, but if we can get a hundred, we'll take a hundred.
So we get, we need to get the booster stations set up, which we hope to be building next year. And then we think, right now, we're building our ten-year capital improvement program. Obviously, water has its own special section, but we're hoping the next thing right after the, the pump station is going to be storage, such as how, what Brooke shared.
I think those are the two top priorities to keep us in water, you know, in that, in the next thirty-five years.
Is it, is it possible as part of the, um, process, either through the planning mission approval process or the city council approval process, that, um, as new neighborhoods come online, obviously some of them have been approved, but, but that, or future new neighborhoods, that there could be a rule that the irrigation system had to be on a well?
We're discussing that, yes. We think that we could do that, it's a wonderful strategy. And it's lots of little pieces like that, and when you add them all together, it makes a big impact. But that's a wonderful idea and it's something that we started kicking around a week or two ago. We think most of them are already on private wells, but there are some that are on city water. And those common grounds, that's a lot of water they'd be using.
You're talking about private wells versus H O A wells, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Home roll wells.
Yeah.
You're talking about prohibiting private homeowners from tapping into the city water system for irrigation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
I was just thinking, you know, one thing for a home homeowner to water their lawn, but, you know, for example, with duplexes that are gonna be rented, I, I imagine those a lot of times probably do just tie a irrigation system off to the house.
Yeah, a lot of the newer duplex communities will have the areas be maintained by major waves. Mostly, I haven't, you know, I've read about that, maybe some of the St. Andrews or perhaps might be on city water, not sure. It's possible.
The St. Andrews irrigation is on, is on wells.
Oh, is it on the well?
Yeah, but the common areas, yeah, we've got four, maybe five wells.
Okay.
So I think prohibiting private, yeah, we, we could say that private property, we just prohibit it, um, tapping basically to, to their own water line system or prohibiting private taps for irrigation to the main.
A little, little education, I think, is a long way though. People water way too much and then they saturate the ground and the water just flows off of, off of their ground, into the gutter. And so maybe we can do some, some public awareness, maybe minimize the number of days, you know, you can water your lawn. You can't, you can't water it five days a week, maybe you can water it two days a week and rotate them, I don't know. Something of that nature may make a difference. There's still a lot of people, they don't have wells to water and keep these along.
You were talking about not allowing homeowners and new additions to their sprinkler systems of the city water?
Yeah.
I've heard that was option. That'd be, uh, be a hard end one to pass. I, I can understand the, the common grounds around the ponds and everything, make, make them be on wells. But homeowners?
Yeah. It's almost a developer conversation, maybe on the front end. Maybe the developer gets a few big wells or several wells all over the subdivision. And they carry that.
I work with a guy who lives in Park City and you can't get a permit to dig a well and you have a well dug in your yard.
They can't get one up, up there?
They don't allow it.
Some cities don't.
They don't want wells?
No.
Wow.
They want you to buy their water.
They must have a lot.
Apparently so.
Wish we had that for them.
You said Park City?
Yeah.
I think they're independent, I don't think they buy that much stuff.
Now, the second question is, with all these new additions, is our treatment plant gonna be big enough?
Our waste water plant?
Yeah, waste water plant.
Yeah, we're running, we're, we're running about fifty percent capacity now. I don't have any concerns of a waste water treatment plant.
And it's expandable as well?
Yes, it is, it's expandable, but I'm not seeing the need to do that, that, currently. We're running about four to four hundred fifty thousand a day, or an Able Tree eight hundred a day, so we're, we're sitting pretty good with that. You know, that's another thing, we have a lot of water going down from the splash pad right into the sewer system and right into our plant. So, pulling those hours back will also reduce the amount of water going into our plant during those peak, peak percent.
Maybe you could recover the water from the splash pad and use it for irrigation.
There's a lot of good things we could do with that maybe in the future. I know A C S is exactly that.
Takes money.
No, that's exactly it. Or recirculate it, put a holding tank in and recirculate would probably be the best option, again, it's just money.
Yeah.
And we can, we can, once we get the infrastructure together and running, it's like running a pool, that's a piece of cake. But it's the spend, uh, two hundred variant or whatever it takes, you know, to make it happen.
A lot of cities, they have, their splash pads and pools are close together and you're like, hmm, why would they do that? You'd think maybe they'd want them in different areas of town, so, you know, other people could enjoy them that live on that side of town or vice versa. But I learned it's because they're on a closed system. So, they're actually circulating the splash pad through the pool. We may be close enough that that's an option, I mean, it's really not that far away. So, we're kind of doing a little bit of due diligence. Even fifteen million gallons, um, if we were able to save that, because we put that system on a closed loop, you're buying a lot right there.
Yeah. With new water anyways, water.
Exactly. And that, this was, uh, and, and here's me looking backward and speculating, but I, I have a, a gut feeling that when we made the investment of the splash pad, we probably could have put it on a closed system there and we were penny wise, pound foolish. One of the things I like about the direction we're currently heading in is we're doing things right and we're doing them once. That may mean spending a little more, but, um, you know, we're, we're gonna have to make an investment now that would have been a lot cheaper if we did it back then when we built the project.
When you're, when you're flush with water and you're running your wells four hours a day and you've got a ton of water sitting up there, that twelve million gallons down the drain here, that's what they have, but when you start to get to your, your close capacity, you're doing that too.
Craig, I think earlier you mentioned about, I think, you said like a ten thousand gallons or more a month, you're, you're being charged more, if I understood you correctly. And are there other incentives like that, or this incentive probably, but, that, you know, other cities do, or the things we could put in place like that?
Most cities have a water conservation program. Our assistant city administrator, Ryan, is working with Brooke as well as Kansas Rural Water Association to, um, pick ours up, so to speak. Everyone has to have one by law, but really, a lot of places just have kind of that bare minimum, like, hey, if there's a drought, you do this, this and that. We're gonna be going above and beyond, um, with this new program. And it's not gonna be super punitive or anything like that, but, uh, may, maybe we'll look at things like low-flow toilets or, or faucets. Maybe you can get a rebate on your bill. And there'll be some other things like that we might consider. I don't think we're gonna, and Brooke mentioned this, I think it's good that we're kind of brainstorming ideas, but I don't foresee that in the near future, we're gonna get to the point where we're gonna be on a watering day rotation kind of thing. That would be safe for drought situations like the city Wichita's currently in.
Sure.
But we will look to incentivize conservation. We're already doing it in a big way by, um, with the new water rates, making it so folks who use that much water are having to pay. There's not a whole lot of cities out there anywhere in the country where you could pay, you know, thirty or forty bucks and use fifty thousand gallons of water. You're just basically giving it away at that point and no one values it, and then you run into these issues. So, um, when we looked at those water rates, very detailed analysis, I mean, it wasn't a quick choice by any stretch of the means, but we looked to see what percentage of our customers fell in each of those tiers. About fifty percent of our customers fall into those two bottom tiers. Twenty to twenty-five percent are those of us who only pay like twenty-five bucks a month for water. We're kind of in that two thousand gallons or less. The next quarter of us, uh, are, are in that second tier, you know, yours, you're paying closer to thirty dollars. And when you get to those higher two tiers, uh, especially that ten thousand and above for a residential customer in the city limits, your bill could double or triple. And, and it's still, even with that, we are smack dab in the middle in comparison to our tier communities. So, we went up, but we didn't go way above, so, you know, we're having issues with people saying, well, we can't afford to live here anymore. Well, that's not the case, if you do the research, we're right there in line as far as what we're charging for our feeds.
Sure, sure. And to your point, I mean, if there's some behavior we can, we can change now before we get into an issue of where we're, you know, in Wichita's case, for example, you know, I mean, if there's some behavior changes today, that would be.
Well, we're trying to take a more community-oriented approach and this ad hoc water committee has been a really interesting process. A lot of the folks that were appointed to that committee were some of the folks that were, uh, at our council meeting after the water rates were adopted and felt very passionately about the issue. And so, there's a lot of energy there. We're bringing in speakers from different, uh, like K R W A, K E H G, some of these government acronyms. We have some of those folks coming in to kind of give them the broad picture so they could truly understand, you know, why these decisions are being made. Uh, we're letting them, uh, kind of come in and take a deep dive in our water rate analysis so they can understand, you know, these numbers, we can just pull out a hat, there's some rhyme and reason behind them, we're trying to be proactive so we can reinvest in the system. We're gonna be meeting for six months, uh, they just had their first meeting last month, they'll have another one coming up, open to the public. Anyone can come participate. In March, uh, they're gonna kind of have a, a, kind of a conclusion, uh, discussion with the city council just to talk to them about, you know, what they had learned, what their recommendations might be moving forward and those kinds of things. So, uh, getting more community oriented and engaging with the citizens on this issue has been rewarding already.
Anything else?
I want to conclude with one thing that I want to impart on you guys again. This is a regulatory, not a physical issue with the water, when we talk about that three hundred twenty million gallons. And the city staff is working extremely hard to make sure that, you know, we're addressing that issue.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
You guys have any other questions about anything related to the city's infrastructure for sewer, water, anything of that nature? That would be a good time, that way I don't have to make it up later.
Let me save this for later.
Yeah, yeah. So, development-wise, I mean, that's all the questions. Development-wise, right now, we don't see any, there's talks about some of the developments that may be coming up on the horizon. Maple Tree, you guys saw Maple Trees come up, that's like eighty lots, it's not very substantial. I don't see, uh, so one of the questions was sort of, I think the mayor brought up the possibility of doing like, stopping all development, that type of thing. I don't see that as being necessary right now. I mean, I think with water conservation, with cut and tied into rural water issue four, um, with everything that's going in place right now with Craig and Ron Schreck and Brooke with managing these processes, I don't really see that as being a major issue. If, for whatever reason, it does become an issue, I'm sure we would address that and say that we would approve. I don't know, one out of every three. Um, we have broad police power as it pertains to cities, especially since we are a home role city. So, we could do a merit-based system for developments, in fact. You don't approve a development unless it be, meets certain merits of what you guys would want to see. I mean, there's lots of things that are wildly considered acceptable, um, under state law and federal law for home role municipalities about how you want to see developments moving forward. And that's something that could be considered. I don't think we're at that point, but if it ever did become an issue, we could consider that, that if you had to meet certain criteria, density metrics, water conservation metrics for the development before it ever got approved. There's, there's things that you guys could do, that's well within the right, as planning mission and city council to require developments to be more refined before you approve the process, that's just something, um, for consideration. Right now, I guess there's no additional developments. I've talked to some developers who are looking at buying more land for new developments, um, but nothing has really hit our desk yet that you guys would see lots or rezell means or anything of that nature, so.
We need the developments to pay for the infrastructure that we need. So, no, no one's having, uh, entertaining conversations about helping development. That's, I'm glad that Mike has a part of that to you. We need those developments to pay for our infrastructure needs.
Do you guys have any other questions, really, that, thoughts, concerns? Feel free, I mean, anything that you guys have, I mean, now's a great time, these two behind me are wealth of knowledge, so.
When are they gonna start the development there on the hundred sixty-seventh on the northwest side?
Pony, Pony and Hundred Sixty-seventh on the northwest corner? Yeah, so we got the, we got the financing for that. The lift station's gonna be on one sixty-seven development, which is on one sixty-seven and fifty-four. So, that development's running in tandem with the development at one sixty-seven and twenty-third. But the lift station's gonna be on the one touching fifty-four, so they need to put that lift station in, or else people will have an awkward surprise when they flush their toilet on the twenty-third south line, it, it goes nowhere. So, yeah, the lift station is going first before they can start moving on that one. Um, and they're working with easement acquisition right now as well to run a sewer and a water line between the two developments so that they don't feed each other.
They're gonna pick up those houses on Hundred Sixty-seventh?
They're not, you know, I met with that property owner, we're not gonna annex them, um, unless they really want to, which doesn't sound like they do, but we are gonna get easement from them. So, easement doesn't mean condemnation, right? We're not condemning the property to take ownership of it. We're asking for easement acquisition, which just simply means that we're going to either trench some of the property and then bore through some of the property to put a water and sewer line there. One of the property owners has asked for an exclusive easement, which I think Brooke and I are actually wildly in agreement about just because, you know, sometimes you never know who's gonna co-occupy an easement. You know, they might just drop a line in there right on top of your existing water line, Kansas gas, or, you know, you never know, and so.
But they, they haven't asked for a water tap since it's going through their property?
One of the property owners said that they would, that they would like to tap into sewer, but they said that we have really hard water, they don't want to have city water, but they would prefer city sewer because subject tanks are costly, so.
Which we are fine with, and it brings up another point of discussion. You know, we've got lots of out-of-city limit, uh, customers and we're, we're not doing that anymore. And if you want to be on the city water, you need to petition to be annexed into the city, so. Just doesn't make sense to bear that cost.
There's no benefit.
There really isn't. I mean, at, at one point, you mentioned a neighboring community that's, doesn't want residential wells. They want everyone they can get on their system so they can add more revenue. Uh, we're just not in that place where we get more revenues by more rooftops.
Yeah.
In the city limits, so to speak.
What else you guys got? Any other thoughts related to developments or growth?
Anything moving forward with one hundred ninety-third and gallon intersection?
The, the Casey's or over the, the turn lane?
The turn lane.
Yeah, so, actually, Craig, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, so, they finished the letting documents last, over the weekend, actually, someone was working after hours, but, so, we are now packaging those into biddable documents. I expect to be advertising for bids hopefully by the end of this month. I'm super hopeful we can start construction before it gets too cold. Big concrete project like that, you don't love to do during the middle of winter. You can do it in Kansas, we don't typically have two weeks of below, you know, frigid temperatures. You can typically do concrete, cover it and those kinds of things, but, um, hopefully we see it start this year and we can be, uh, it's only like a two-month project, it's, should go pretty quick.
Curtis, the, the general manager of Walmart, asked that we keep him up to date on that one, so we definitely will keep him involved and anybody else put on that. Yeah, it should be a good improvement to that, to that area, for sure.
Casey's moving forward?
Casey's is technical and complicated, but we are hopefully moving forward on that one. Yeah, we, right now, council approved the petitions for the money to put in the improvements that Casey wants to see before they sign the closing documents for the transfer of ownership of land. And so, we got that approved by council. Um, we need some technical documents to be signed, they're not actually that technical, it's just a memorandum of understanding between us and Casey's that you will be assessed for a proportion of this cost and, it's, it's interesting. It's a, but we are moving forward and, and the city council did approve, um, us using this sort of non-traditional method to bring Casey's about, but at the same time, they also approved the petitions for money. We'll have to tie that. The Casey's bond is so small that nobody's gonna want to buy it on the free market. Like, if I go offer a two hundred eighty thousand on the free market, come buy this bond, nobody's gonna want it. And so, we need to tie it to like Arbor Creek South, which is probably what we do. We need to tie it to a bigger bond, something over two million dollars, or else, you know, we just want people to sell it on the market. We could pay out of pocket for that, that's kind of non-traditional. Craig, I talked about that, we don't want to pay out of pocket and pay ourselves back later, it's just not a good practice. Everybody, you know, as soon as you do it for one developer, by golly, every developer wants it at that point, right? So, it's like, no, we're just gonna do stick to a traditional process. I actually talked to, uh, Leanne Barney today, she's the one who owns House of Blues, it's being transferred to the Casey's, so she was asked about that as well. What else? Any other thoughts?
Are you still gonna talk about that, did you update on the moratorium?
Yeah, so if you want, we can.
I was trying to skip, I just didn't know what that was.
Sounds like you were trying to skip.
Okay.
That's what it sounds like to me. Uh, no, we'll close this one out, this is just receiving file, obviously. But Brooke Brandenburg, like I said, he's a wealth of knowledge. If you guys have questions, you know, should have been. Brooke Brandenburg, like I said, he's a wealth of knowledge, if you guys have questions, you know, shoot them an email and he can answer them, you know, when he gets time, he's obviously super busy, so, but if you guys have questions, then feel free just to shoot it to him instead of me, you know, because like I said, I don't want to have to make anything like a spy. You know, it's not a residual intent, I know something. So let's go to the staff, of course, I'm going into that. There's a resolution for moratorium on duplexes, so this came up, obviously duplexes are a hot topic, everyone's got different ideas. At the last council meeting, it was presented as sort of, do we want, how do we want to split it up, how do we want to handle this? We presented a resolution for having it by dwelling units, like percentage of all new developments, all new developments. Everything that's existing is done, we're moving forward. If hypothetically, some developers said, hey, Mike, I want to present this new development, ABC development, what, I want to put duplexes in there, we said in the resolution that we want to do it by dwelling units. Like, okay, let's consider dwelling units as a ratio, you know, a certain amount of duplex dwelling units would be acceptable and everything else would have to be something other than duplex. City council was split, there was, it was kind of an interesting conversation, just kind of see where everybody was. Ultimately, it passed three to two, telling the city staff that they want to move forward with a moratorium, to draft a resolution for a moratorium that will be considered on the 16th. And a moratorium basically means cease and desist on all duplexes, moving forward from the date of adoption until a designated time. In this case, we put 48 months in there, which basically is four years. So this would, if it's adopted as drafted, which hasn't been adopted yet, but if it's adopted as drafted, that would mean no more duplexes for a four-year period. Obviously, from a legal perspective, you can't tie the hands of a future council, so let's say all the current council members step down, there's new council, you can't tie them in perpetuity, so they could just revoke that resolution and just reinstate it however they want, but this, at this point, the way it's drafted, it's, it'll be basically a no-go on all duplexes, even standalone duplexes, they'd be just a no-go, no more building permits for them. Other than, everything that's been passed, obviously, probably with anything else, all the existing developments will keep, will be able to move forward. But if anybody was like, hey, I want to replat, I want flat, I want to rezone, our own quality condition would use permanent answer would be no on that, as it fits to duplexes. So that's kind of the way it's drafted right now, this is exclusive, this is, this is only including duplexes, right? So everything else would be considered acceptable. So that distinction between twin homes and duplexes is outlined in that resolution, saying that, hey, we're talking about duplexes, basically it's based on the information we got from Kit Corby and prevailing sentiment and market trends, we thought that duplexes would be over here on the no-go side and then twin homes would be considered acceptable. So how we would handle that from a regulatory perspective would be, you guys would be looking at flats and you would say, hey, this is interesting, we have a lot that looks like this, and then you have another lot that's split. And so during the plating process, you guys would see a lot of lots that have, that's denoted as being a twin home lot. And that's why you would see it there, because it's easier to deal with, one, with petition process if the plating's done upfront with the twin homes, that way you don't have to go through a respread agreement. And two, it would clearly denote which ones are twin homes, because you would very clearly see, here's one lot, here's half of that lot and then another half of the lot, which is a twin home. That way, there's no concern about like, well, are these going to actually be twin homes and what's going to, what's going to stop them or what's going to actually enable them to actually do the twin homes versus just turning them into duplexes? And so saying, no, we're going to have twin homes and they're going to be pre-platted as twin homes upfront would be essential, so. And we also are drafting ordinance that would say that twin home, that if you're going to do lot splits, that they can be done administratively. We'll be bringing that before you guys, typically we bring lot splits before you guys. And so we published it in the city newspaper, we'll be bringing you a draft that says, hey, there's going to be a lot of lot splits in the future, we would like to consider that administratively, if you guys are okay with that, and if you guys are going to say, yeah, you're okay with that, then it'll go to city council, and city council will have to approve that. But that's a change, the subdivision regulations, that basically says, if anybody has an existing duplex and they want to turn it into a twin home, they can do it administratively through the simple process of a survey and staff taking a look at it and making sure it conforms to the subdivision regulations and we scan that and they record it with the registered deeds.
Mike, did I add something?
Yeah, of course.
Since really the only difference between a duplex and a twin home is that you're splitting the lots up prior to plating, some of the other things that the council's advised us to look at, including amendment to the subdivision regulation, would be some design standards for the twin homes, as well as some minimum square foot and bedroom minimum, so to speak. So no less than 1,300 a side, no less than three bedrooms a side, design standard you're looking at, you know, you need to have a masonry or stone or brick or likewise Waynescott, you know, so many feet and so far around the facility or the housing. And doing it that way, allowing the twin homes would make it so maybe you encourage more owner occupancy versus more rental proclivities there. There's something else with that that I was going to add. In the draft phases, as Mike has suggested, those are some added context, I think they're important. Really, the only difference, again, is that you're subdividing all those during the plating process. So we still wanted to add some design standards too to that, but there wouldn't be a ratio in this iteration, so to speak. It'd be no duplexes at all, but no ratio for the twin home direction. I'm interested to hear what they think about that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if you look out and you look at duplex and you look at twin home, they can look exactly alike. The only difference would be legally speaking, there's a lot line that's got split down the middle of it and there's a parcel number on one side, a parcel number on the other side. Kit Corby, like I said, she was great, she brought a lot of really good information. She mentioned that 87% of twin homes are owner occupied, I think that's a big metric to consider. 95% of duplexes are, you know, real estate investment trusts and LLCs, and so only 5% of duplexes are owner occupied. 95% of rent are, you know, are just designed for, for investment opportunities. That being said, that doesn't stop somebody from buying a whole bunch, you know, creating a whole bunch of twin homes, having a lot splits and still selling them to a real estate investment trust. You can't, there's no way we could prohibit that, that's come up multiple times. I don't know of any legal way that you could stop somebody from doing that. And so like, I can't stop you from selling your home, you can't, I can't stop a developer from splitting a bunch of lots, creating a bunch of twin homes and then selling them to, you know, ABC LLC out of the east coast, you know, I can't stop that, so.
I think that conversation started with a discussion of what percentage of housing units can be duplexes versus single family homes. Now that we're officially doing away with duplexes and we're talking twin homes versus single family homes, are we going to start talking about a percentage that can be twin home versus single family?
Right now, no.
No.
Yeah, right now, no.
Nope.
Are they affordable? They were talking a while back about building affordable housing so people could buy it.
Yeah, I noticed, the problem is. Yeah, I think, I think what you're going to see, which comes up a lot, is that you have seven planning commissioners, five council members, right? Including the mayor, and you have constituents and the population at large. Everybody's got different goals for like housing regulation, and so like, what, what goals are people shooting for? And so you're, you're going to see that, yeah, if we, if you put a Waynescott on it, it increases the cost of it, right? If you demand a minimum square footage, that increases the cost. If you demand a minimum amount of bedrooms and bathrooms, that increases the cost. So yeah, you, your goal is no longer affordability at that point, your goal is sort of aesthetic and general community development that's going away from that, from housing affordability.
Affordable is relative, too. I mean, right now, the median home value in Goddard is $300,000. You can go buy a side of a duplex or a twin home for low twos, is that affordable? I think so. And we do have quote unquote affordable housing coming online, the Arbor Creek South with the Liberty Style Homes, that's going to be low twos. We've got an apartment project coming up that's going to be awesome, because we don't have anything like that right now. That's going to be rents close to that thousand dollar range, maybe a little higher. So those opportunities are coming online. A lot of thanks to Mike's hard work and for hearing some of these opportunities.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good point, so, I mean, we're trying to diversify housing and trying to, as, you know, as Craig said, affordability is subjective, obviously based on the parameters, and so. I think that, I think the focus has been really strongly put, this big spotlight, on duplexes because it's been a really hot market trend recently, but we are trying to actively engage in a diversity of housing for all.
Is any of this being based on customer demand? Or is it just on perception of what a duplex means?
I think people's, I think people's perceptions are definitely making it do it. It's impossible to sort of extricate somebody's personal opinions from policy, right? And I think that we try, as city staff, we try to be as objective as possible, we try to be as sort of what I call technocratic rationalism, we try to use technology and objective metrics to come up with policies. But ultimately, at the end of the day, council and, you know, with the advice of planning commission are going to draft policies that they think is best for the city, regardless of, you know, if, they'll take into account what we say, but at the end of the day, they'll, they'll make a decision that they think is best regardless of, you know, if it goes against general principles of economic growth, so.
Chairman, I've said it once, I'll say it again, I think the demand factor in that equation is coming very quickly. We're already hearing from the developers that we work with that the duplex market's probably tapped out in Goddard. I don't think it's, I don't think they're referencing the things we say during our public meetings, I think they're referencing what they're actually seeing in the market. So even with this draft policy, I don't think we're going to see much more of that coming. They don't want the cookie cutter, you hear the term barracks looking style duplexes. They seem to be okay with the twin homes, which is why we've started to modify the policy to allow for that with some design standards. They just don't want more of that cookie cutter, copy paste, 1250 a side stuff with the concrete finish floor, the builder's grade carpet, all, that's what they're trying to transition away from, so to speak.
Sure.
I think the market's going to do that on its own now.
Which it typically does, and that's why, you know, it's just tough to me to think about setting a four-year limit. And I, I know you said it could change, but, you know, here we are, basically putting up walls.
I don't think that's going to happen.
Allow us to, to shift to, to demand, since, I mean, this market's heavily demand driven. And if three years from now, we need more duplexes, and they're going to go somewhere.
When the term four years was thrown out there, I don't, I think there was a few winces, I don't think that that's where they're going to land.
And that's fine, I just, you know, those are just things that I, I think of, you know. Developers and builders tend to shift to what people want as quickly as they can, and if we're in a position where we have to tell them no until we can get something changed, that's, that's going to inhibit what we can do.
Very possible.
Unintended consequences are, are things that we're discussing with the council, too, because we, you know, staff sees some similar concerns with that.
Given your knowledge, are any of the other neighboring communities having a moratorium like this? Or is it a unique Goddard idea?
Or lead the pack, unless Mike knows of something that I know.
I'm not aware of any. Would have a moratorium, that's, moratorium is certainly a very much strong, and if we have a, yeah, but.
I guess if I, my opinion would be I'd much rather have a continued dialogue with the, with the council and drive it that way as opposed to something as rigid as this, if that, I don't want to speak for everybody, but.
I, you speak for me there, I would second that.
I think that the few, the last few times we've met openly and had discussions, I think they've been productive. It certainly helps us understand their direction, and I think we can communicate much more effectively with that.
Yeah, I think, I think as far as I can tell, they're going to continue to have joint workshops. And so, I mean, and number two, I'm assuming is a try of maybe on October 16th, I don't know, like today. And so they're going to, that is an opportunity for you guys to discuss. I mean, we'll, we'll go over the Jerry Hoffman report again, he sent us some more refined data. The school district will be there, I don't know how many of you could be there, just kind of jump into it. The city council will send you guys on October 16th at 6 o'clock, which is on Wednesday, school district will be there, council will be there, anybody from planning commission can be there. Craig has mentioned that we would prefer a quorum, and so if, as many representatives, at least four, a planning commission can be there. If not, then we'll probably have to just reschedule and just, you know, because we'd rather have as much representation of planning commission as possible that at least maybe, just so that everybody's kind of on the same page and there can be some consensus going. There's, just kind of as a show of hands, do you guys feel like you could make it to 6 o'clock on Wednesday, on the 16th? I know, you know, council, yeah, Commissioner Hayden said no.
I can't, and I said fall, spring rate for our Goddard school district.
Yeah.
I said spring rate for fall.
For fall, yeah, spring rate, yeah.
That's the 16th of September?
October.
Oh, October.
Can't be there?
No.
You can be there, okay, so I got one, who, raise your hand if you can be there.
As of right now, I can be there.
Raise your hand if you can, so one, two, three.
I don't know which one, just get it real good.
Walker's really going to hit though, Klein's maybe, so we'll have to reevaluate.
We really want to have four there, so commissioner Klein, let us know as soon as you can. We want to make sure we're valuing the school district's time. This will be the first time, to our knowledge, that we've had something like this with them, so we're pretty excited about it.
I would really like to, you know, I just can't.
I would too, I mean, this was why, I mean, this was what I requested at the end of the last meeting, was to have a meeting with them. Yeah, I had already complained about vacation, I.
Cancel it.
Yeah.
Send us, send Mike some alternative dates and we'll see if that works for the school.
Yeah, let me know, and commissioner Hayden asked, was the Davis, I never have the report, so I'll see if I can get it from the school district. We assisted in, Davis didn't have it with their report when they put it up for the school district, and so I'll see if I can get that report for you guys as well.
Mike, I want to ask him, sorry for talking so much, but do you guys see value in having another discussion about the updated housing study with the more Goddard specific data? Or would you rather spend, say, the last 20 or 30 minutes of that joint meeting talking about that policy that we were just discussing?
I would prefer to have more time just to talk, I felt when we, when we had our last meeting, we spent 90% of that meeting listening to that, but it was great, it was great to hear, but the, there was very little dialogue, there was very little time for, for, I spent so much time talking about the study. There was very little time for dialogue between us and the city council, looks how I felt.
I would agree with that a lot.
So maybe we don't do our housing study and we just, right after the school's done, we kind of have open dialogue amongst the school, the council, and planning commission. We're trying to keep it to an hour, but we could probably throw another 15 minutes on there, too, if we wanted to.
Yeah, they save the housing study, so that's fair. Yeah, and we can send an out attachment that.
Yeah. Or they could send a GIN item, so they just have it.
Yeah.
But really, the only difference is, is that you guys solved him to drive time, we asked them to recreate it using Goddard specific data and they did that, so that's the change.
Could probably also do it in the staff report next month.
Yeah, yeah, then we can ask you lots of questions.
Well, I think you could probably pick out the stuff that, you know, we're interested in, that we don't necessarily have to, to dive into the whole thing.
Oh, sure.
With the important pieces of three or four bullets or whatever would be very beneficial.
Yes, yes, I can definitely, like, on the housing study, everybody's got different ideas of the analytics when it comes to formulas for housing studies. And so sometimes I'm a little bit critical, I say, but then I'm like, I don't know if I would have done it that way, but that's, you know, it's. We have local knowledge.
That's why I say you have local knowledge, and have every local one they can with the information.
Yeah, and the, like I said, various demographic ones, just them reaching out to me, and they go, here's all my data, what do you guys see? And then they put together, so.
I got to give them a little teaser, Mike, the, that study shows there's 51 new developments in the Goddard school district. The city itself accounts for, I think, less than 10 of those. That really kind of starts to advertise to you the effect of our neighboring community to the east growing around us and gives us some cause for concern of the unintended consequence of, you know, restricting the market, so to speak. So, sorry to maybe throw out the hottest statistic you might get here in a couple weeks.
That's the draw that gets to come.
Yeah, you're going to get more. But I just, when, when Dr. Henry shared that with me, I was just floored, I started trying to count all of them in my head. 50 developments, it's crazy.
All of them.
Yeah.
130, 50 central.
Perfection, yeah.
130, 50, 167, both sides.
Yeah.
Now the point is, on the other side.
Yeah, it's quite a lot, and all that data, we get a data dump from accounting every three months, and so we can georeference all that information and show where all the flats are in relation to the school district, and so it's, it's, it's quite a bit, it's, it's interesting for sure. Do you guys have any questions related to these? Like I said, we'll reach out to see if it's a better day, especially if commissioner Klein can't make it, then we'll still be delighted to give you guys and that'd be more beneficial to.
I think the more of us that are there, the better, so.
Yeah, that works for the school district, definitely.
Yeah, obviously, it works for the school district because it's called RIC.
Maybe send us the dates so you couldn't meet that week, because it sounds like some of you can't, but. Because it sounds like some of you can't, but if there are other dates, we can figure those out.
I'll send them an email and I'll follow up with you guys on my phone call, just to see what we can do. And Commissioner comments?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Asher.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
So as mentioned, October 14th, you get the next planning permission meeting, and then joint workshop the October 16th, unless we change it to a Monday.
Prepare motion.
I'm not motioning.
Three, last second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.